I'll go and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, County of Starr, Monday, August 24th. As the record show, we do have a forum, Commissioner Vasza being absent. And thank you all for being here this morning. Everyone, would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Can you tell tonight? To the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, with justice for all.
Wait now, you have an extra pen? A pen by any chance?
Yes, sir. Is it hot in here?
Yeah. To prepare for you. Any public comments?
There's none, your honor.
Okay, we have a presentation from Ibrahim Garza on the census. Do you want to call him in, please? Ibrahim, you're up next if you want to get on the podium. Just flip her around, please. Okay, Ibrahim, with the census and he's going to give a presentation.
Okay, so, I don't know, how many of you guys already heard of the R T V Census of Past Years Scholarship?
I have.
So, basically where it's planned is, is we're going to distribute $1,000 scholarships to students in Region 1, which covers Idalgo, Willacy, Starr, Cameron County. But the goal of this scholarship is to do is to increase census turnout to 70% valid life. As of now, we are at 50%, so we need to increase this turnout by additional 20% by the end of next month. So unfortunately, we're still pretty low on turnout throughout most of the valley. So Starr County is one of those counties that are low on turnout. I'm here to tell you guys, well, we're here to help you out. We're planning on doing several events valley-wide, including a September 10 event where we're going to coordinate with the Chamber of Commerce in every single county in a major city in the valley. And we're going to help students not only their scholarship, but we're also going to get them to, you know, work with local businesses to give them like free food, things like that. So the scholarship is for college, high school, vocational students that can apply. All you have to do is you fill out the census, the confirmation form to get it when you've filed before. You just submit it on the website and you have a chance to win the scholarship. Now, today what I'm here to do is, we do have a lot of flyers, and I know a lot of the peace commissioners, how many of you guys are canvassing your neighborhoods for the census or doing census outreach efforts?
A lot of them are.
A lot?
Yeah.
And how many of you guys here would like to distribute flyers of the scholarship with your outreach efforts?
You can give whatever you want. I'm doing it already.
Because I do, I did bring flyers with me, so that you guys can distribute it with your census outreach efforts here in Starr County. And that's, that's basically what we're trying to do here is to help increase turnout. It's going to be more grassroots kind of thing, and we're going to have to work together with that sense. Now, what we're going to do in Starr County is, as it does progress more, we're going to have more events in the counties that, you know, do county. And as of now, most of our stuff has been allocated, because they have been moving up really fast. But hopefully, we're going to be able to do more stuff here in Starr County. And to do that, we're going to need to work together more with our local leaders, such as yourself, and try to get turnout to go up a little more. Because I think as of now, it's at 48%, correct?
Ours?
Yeah.
No, county-wide, we're at about 43.
43?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why, like, we only have to get it next month, and it's very important that we get it up, because, I mean, that's how counties, they get paid. That's how we have federal funding, that's how we have, you know, local representation. And in order to get up, we're going to need to work together to increase that turnout. And to get that done, we're going to need to all work together. So we're not only coordinating just here in Starr County, but we're coordinating with all these different counties, the four counties. And to do that, like I said, we're going to need to coordinate with commissioners, city officials, business owners, everyone you can get on. So, I guess, well, I did bring flyers, for those of you that are interested in helping it, helping distribute it to Starr County. And in the future, we're going to hold events with, I'm trying to organize a meeting with county judges. So I'm thinking about getting Judge, what, Judge, what is his name? Judge Ortiz from Idalgo County. Getting the judges together to do a broadcast discussing the census and legalities of the census, because another issue that we found was that people don't want to register with the census, because it sounds too legal when they receive that form in the mail, and that discourages them from registering and filling out the census. So we want to have the judges talk about it, so people feel more comfortable filling out the census. And in addition to that, you know, we're going to be doing, you know, those things. And if you guys have any other outreach efforts that you're doing, our team is coordinating now.
Yeah, the last couple of weeks, the commissioners have been working really hard with the food drive, the pantry, stovetop, and Cynthia came up with a form, which is, in essence, is the information that's required by the census. And while the car dealers in line, they give out those forms, they fill them out, and then we enter. The reason we stayed so far behind was that, at the beginning, we were told that we couldn't do that. That it had to be census people that entered the data, and later on, that changed. So that's when, in fact, currently for the last three weeks, the one that has moved up the higher percentage points has been Starr County, but we were way, way under.
Are there any questions? Has anyone from my team been coordinating with anyone here?
It's anyone from what?
My team.
Yeah, Ira Sema, from the census team?
No, not for the census, for the scholarship team.
No, well, on the scholarship, let's see, who came by? The scholarship, what it is, is the students, any student that signs up and they register their family, they put their name into, I guess, a drawing, and they're going to get 50 scholarships of $1,000 each. So, you know, they have a chance of winning $1,000 as a scholarship, and that would be the students. Is that correct?
Sure. We're looking at distributing $150,000, but my question is, you see my team? So I work with our executive committee member of Idalgo County, so I work with the Los of Batu. So the ladies that are starting this, have they done anything other than try to raise money here?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't seen anyone or met anyone.
No, because they were supposed to be doing outreach efforts here, because as of my understanding, what has been going on, for the most part, was they're working with the Chamber of Commerce to raise money, but I haven't seen them make much outreach efforts, which is why I was sent here to get that done. And that's why I was trying to see if anyone has raised.
Well, see, that's going to be one, one big issue. In Idalgo County, you go out and ask for a $1,000 donation, and there's a lot of car dealerships, a lot of banks, a lot of grocery stores, large businesses, that they contribute, and it's easy to raise funds. Here in Starr, there are only a few of those that you might be able to hit. And the problem is, they're going to get hit every time. So it's very difficult to raise 40, $50,000 in Starr County. I mean, it just doesn't happen.
Yeah, no, that's kind of why we were discussing at our board meeting, that's not the approach we're trying to take anymore, because we're already raising, we're raising enough money, but it's more about increasing turnout, that's the important thing. And from my understanding, what the team has been doing over here is just trying to increase, you know, donations, but, I mean, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to do more or less increase turnout, that's the goal. And it looks like they haven't been coordinating with anyone, so.
If they have, it hasn't been me, I don't know. Cynthia Fuentes is the one.
Right, if I may, yeah, what we're doing or attempting to do with that is actually, they're already raising dollars throughout the valley. A lot of these entities have branches or do business here, and so they're allocating those dollars to go across the multi-county area. And it's sort of an effort, if there's anything that is raised here exclusively, then it's added to that pot, and those dollars are being sorted out through the multi-county area by, let's say, V H R, by like, whoa, Lobstar Bank or V B B A, because they have business in all the counties. So when they donate, they've been saying designated for all three counties.
Correct. Yeah, so that's why right now the main goal is to just coordinate to increase turnout. I'm going to try to figure out a way for them to let me just leave that instead of fundraising efforts, because I know that's going to be, I think we need to focus more on turnout at this point. Because we do only have to get it next month. So what I want to do is, for the commissioners, I do want to seriously push this, coordinate with me and my team, and we'll help you guys out with the flyers, and we'll help you guys with marketing and distribution and that kind of thing.
Sounds good. Any questions, Ray?
Nelson.
Thank you so much, Ibrahim. The flyers, if you just give them to Raina and she will pass them out to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4 is to approve the vendor's list.
Good morning, gents, commissioners. You should have a copy of the vendor's list in front of you, been reviewed and recommended that they approve.
Alim Per, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 7 is to take action on this. Oh. Six, okay, it's the claims.
Again, you should have a copy of the claims in front of you. We've reviewed claims and we recommend that they be approved.
Motion second to approve, discussion. Alim Per, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items 7, 8, and 9, you know, we've been talking about that. What these are is the monies, the COVID money from the CARES Act that we still have in Austin. We received from the feds $1,836,945, of which they allocated 20%, which was $367,389. And that we spent, I think we've got 50,000, 60,000 left right now, so we spend it pretty much done with. The remaining monies have to be on reimbursements. We have to spend it and then ask for reimbursements. And this is where it gets a little risky, because, you know, hopefully, the turnaround will be quick, so that we will not incur any cash flow problems, but, you know, that's, that's still, we don't know what's going to happen. But what, you know, what I had talked about in our last Commissioners' Court meeting was using $750,000 for three different programs, which was to help small businesses, to help families with utility bills, and to help with funeral expenses. However, we, I cannot use $750,000. The most we can use is 25% of what was allocated, and that is by the state regulations, which I feel is really unfair. Idalgo County, they don't have that, because that came from the feds. But the state added this regulation to ours. So 25% of the 1.8 million is only 459,000 that we can use for these three programs. So that puts us kind of in a bind, on account that the funerals, if we're going to help with $2,000 for the funerals, we already have, as of yesterday, 117 deaths. So, I mean, that takes care of about a quarter of a million dollars. So what I'm recommending to the court is that utilities and businesses, that we only help those people that live outside city limits. The cities got monies also from COVID. And I know Rio Grande has helped already their businesses. So, you know, the other cities could have money to help the cities also. So I feel, you know, that if we, if we go with utilities for people outside the cities that are having trouble with utilities, and we'll have some, they would have to apply, and there's things that they must meet, some thresholds. At $150 each, we could help about 668 families that live outside city limits. And on businesses, if we help them with $1,500 per business, we could allocate about 75,000. That would help about 50 businesses that are outside city limits. And then for funerals, the remaining money, which is 284,000, at $2,000, that would help 152 families. Of those 117 have already been, you know, I don't know if they're going to apply or not, but if they do, that only leaves us a capacity of 29, I'm sorry, 25 additional deaths.
How would they qualify for the funeral?
Okay, on the funerals, really, the only requirement would be that they must have died from COVID.
Oh, they've got to be from COVID.
Yeah, and what I was planning, Commissioner, on that one, was the funeral home, or someone needs to give us a death certificate, or some of the doctor's report, something that verifies that it was COVID. And then, the, once they apply, we would give the check to the funeral home, so that if there's any debt, they would get paid from that money, or whatever they could. And if they've already paid it, then it's up to the funeral home to disperse it to the family, because.
If this goes long term, and there's no more money to give out anymore, how are we going to cover the ones that are going to die? You know, we only go, and that's what everyone's doing, you know, we go only until we run out of funds. Once we run out of funds, you know, the program ends. And that would apply for businesses and utilities for everybody. Hopefully, with the new CARES Act or the new HEROES Act that they're trying to pass, maybe there'll be some more money that we can use.
Well, that's when, we marry people every week, on that reason. The people already paid for funeral expenses.
Good.
To roll through to whatever, they took what it was like?
Yes. As long as they can bring in the death certificate, yeah, even though they died a month ago.
On the funeral, we have to be something reasonable, don't we? Because some of these funerals, some people go out all the way, $30,000 for the.
The max that we would pay is 2,000.
Max?
Yeah.
I mean, the criteria should be at the economic level of the family, you know?
Well, we could, you know, this is why it's here, you know.
Why would, we want to help somebody like, that can afford a funeral? I mean, if they earn $200,000 a year, the wife, and $300,000 a year, the husband, why do you want to help?
Yeah, then that's a very different point, Commissioner. You know, we could, we could ask for their income tax returns, maybe.
Yeah, put a limit somewhere.
Yeah, the thing is, and we can say anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000, that would help us out. Now, the thing is, the funeral homes, they want to get paid really quick. If we're going to get all this information, it might take a little while, but we can try it. You know, we can say, you know, and we can have a sliding scale.
Yeah, we can probably only help the low incomes, like Commissioner, as I said.
Yeah, people that have income of less than, what, 30,000?
Very reasonable, 30,000.
So that'll help us out?
Yeah, that'll help us out. Yeah, that'll help us out. Porque si no, I mean, just yesterday, we had, I think it was five or eight deaths. Yeah, so, I mean, this is, we're going to run out of money real quick, so, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. We can say $2,000 for anyone earning.
Less than 30,000.
Yeah. Less than 30, and over 30.
A thousand five?
Thirty-two, let's say from 30 to 50, maybe 1,000, and over 50, none.
I agree with it. That's what you figured out.
Okay. Let me write this down. Okay, 30,000, between 30 and 50 would be 1,000, and over 50 would be none. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, on the, on the businesses, that also has, you know, a business has to have less than, I don't have the data with me, but I think it's 250,000 or something like that, gross revenue?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah, if a business makes more than 250,000, they don't qualify. That's gross. Now, their net might be 50,000 or something, but we're going on gross.
On the funeral, just a quick thing to point out, there are some people that, depending on level of income, still, like, may have had life insurance. That's something you may want to consider, if they have life insurance or not, or if that doesn't play a role.
Yeah.
That's a good question, because some people have funeral.
Yeah, probably.
Not life insurance, but insurance for the burial.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, that's generally where I might be. Those insurance policies go straight to the.
They didn't have burial insurance, probably, they don't qualify?
If they have insurance?
If they have a burial insurance, they don't qualify, or what?
You know, we're open to suggestions, if, yeah.
What do they not insure, probably, for burial?
Yeah, see, and all of those are good questions, and certainly, that's something to consider. The thing is, how long is it going to take for us to?
Porque todo la niña se unen.
And how do we prove the thing, too? Any ideas, Rose?
Normally, when there's a life insurance policy or burial, it does not go to the family, it goes straight to the funeral home. Because they're the ones that have to apply, because, let's say I have a $50,000 policy or 20,000 or whatever, then when I put that in there, they don't get it to me directly. When the insurances, or when the funeral home's making their arrangements, they take that policy and they become the first K E, and then they pay the family the.
Why don't we, why don't we do that, you know, add that as a requirement to the funeral home?
Correct. And that doesn't go to the family. This would be to the funeral home.
Right, the funeral home would be the one applying, and would tell them, do the family, or do they have life insurance?
Right, right.
And if they do, then of course, that would disqualify.
But I could have the burial insurance.
Or burial, that kind of, any kind of insurance that covers those costs. Okay, all right.
Is that, is that, okay, what you get?
Yes, sure, yeah.
And, yeah, so we can stretch it and help as many people as we can. On the utilities, what I was thinking it up, you know, we would ask people to bring in their utility bills where they show that they're delinquent at least two months, or they're going into two months. And it's ready to protect them from having their water, gas.
And using the same criteria, it is more than enough? Because how can you be earning that much if you're a delinquent?
Well, if you're earning that much, you're not going to be a delinquent.
Ah, que sabe, la maquinita.
And I.
They will destroy.
They will destroy, yeah.
And we could, we could, it's going to be those that have the problem with the utilities. Anyway, that one, and why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we come up with some requirements and send them to the commissioners for approval? For utilities and businesses, those, we can, they're not as pressing as the funeral.
Who are you going to task that for? Who are you going to give that task to?
We've been working on it, Rose, and Cynthia, Raina, Manisha, and, come up with, we'll come up with some, and then we'll give it to you guys and look them over. And if you all agree, then we'll go with that. And if not, we'll change it. But the one of the funeral is the one that I would like to start, because we have bodies that are in storage, because they hadn't been able to take care of them, you know, so. So if it's okay, you know, we'll take them one at a time, and we can do the small businesses, seven and eight, which is the small businesses and utilities, that we come up with some guidelines as to who would qualify and who wouldn't, and pass them, give them to you all, and once you all approve them, that then we can go ahead and start discharging people, rather than wait another couple of weeks. And then on the funeral, if it's okay, that the motion would read that we will go ahead and assist families that make under 30,000 up to $2,000, between 30 and 50, 1,000, and over 50,000, they will not get any help. And that's based on income tax return.
Delivering?
Yeah, you know.
Is that most or less okay?
Yes, sir.
Daniel, sir?
I move the, I don't know, seven, eight, is it, is anybody?
Take the move.
Okay, motion second to approve items 7 and 8, where we're going to be coming up with some guidelines for your approval. Once we have your approval, we can go ahead and start implementing. We don't have to bring it back. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's true.
Okay, Alim Per, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 9, that's the one for the funeral expense?
Also, I made the motion that we approve, as mentioned, by you.
Take it.
Motion second, and that would be for families with income, their income tax return, that shows less than 30,000 income would qualify up to $2,000. Between 30 and 50,000 income, $1,000, and over 50,000 would qualify, they wouldn't qualify for any assistance. And again, this is, you know, I want to make this very clear to the public. We wish we could help everyone with the 2,000, but unfortunately, the state has allowed only so much money that we can use, and we're trying to stretch the dollars out so that we can continue helping those that need to help the most. I realize everyone needs help, but some, some people need more help than others. Alim Per, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10 is to, on the same lines, to open a separate account for funds for the CARES Act, and Mr. Pettis and I, I guess we need to sit down and see how we're going to work this, but what I'd like to do is move monies into an account, and that way, we don't have to wait for P O's and all that. You know, once they meet the threshold, we can go ahead and kind of check quick, because they need to pay either their utilities, or for the funeral, or whatever. So I think the best way is to have a separate bank account. Is that okay?
I move that we approve a couple, you know?
Second, sir.
Motion second, discussion. Alim Per, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11 is an action item, is to approve a permit from Valley Telephone?
Yes, it has been checked and it's okay.
Is it the one?
It's a 2094, that is it.
What is that?
That's not mine.
Motion second to approve, discussion. Alim Per, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12 is to take action, is to approve personnel for the November 3 general election. You want to call John, please?
Yes, John.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're in, we're on item 12, and this is to approve personnel for the November 3 general election.
I believe you all have the list in front of you?
Yes.
Do you have any questions? Well, those are just partial of the names we're trying to get, and we're having issues. I guess you, because we want to.
Just, how do we make it easier for John? Because he's going to be having problems, that, authorize him to hire? If some of these people walk out and don't want to work?
We need to, I guess, overreact, I mean, we have other elections around us, and.
It's going to be hard.
Normally, when John comes to me, I tell him, hire whoever you need, you know, book him.
They don't ratify the payment again.
Yeah, and we, the court does need to approve the workers, but we could just, you can go ahead and commit to them, and then the court can ratify it.
Okay, I move that we approve the list, please, here.
Take it and move it.
Motion second to approve, discussion. Alim Per, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is to approve the notice of election for the November 3 election.
I'm moving to accept the approval of election.
This is for?
The additional three.
Additional three.
Yes.
And we just see in Roma.
You're making the motion?
I'm making the motion.
I see the motion.
Okay, I have a motion in second to add three additional voting sites. Honitor, please.
Aye.
Oppose. I'm going to vote opposed. I'm going to, and and I'll tell you why. You know, I've always promoted that we only have one poll first, you know, because of money issues, to save money. However, if the court.
Right now, they're different on it based on COVID.
Yeah.
We didn't open them up because of, I respect your decision, but COVID's playing a part because of of what's happening.
That that is true. However.
And now with the country, you feel voter suppression. We don't want to be part of the whole country. Voter suppression, voter suppression. Let's let people vote, especially now that they need a six feet distance and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are, we are going to have a safety window, safety, everything. We need our voters to be safe, secure when they go vote.
And our, and our workers.
Yeah, we come in mass, wear masks, wear everything.
Yeah. John, do you think the COVID would interfere with the voter people?
I think we'll we'll see more curbside voting. That's the only issue I think I'm going to see, increasing the vote on the early voting, on the early voting by mail and on the curbside. People that just want to vote, going to, I guess, get out and vote. They probably just vote from the from the.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I just, I wanted to 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 let everyone know that there's a few counties right now that are considering moving all unopposed candidates to the end of the ballot so that there's, the people spend a lot less time voting through a poll. I think Webb is doing it. It looks like he.
Yeah, I I'm wanting to, but the thing is, sort of said, we have to follow.
See, no, but I just.
Yeah, no, no.
All right, I'm perfect.
Yeah, yeah, Dan and I have talked about that.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Three ones, are you, you're the one voting against?
I'm sorry?
You're the one voting against?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Oh, the other thing I was going to say, John ordered some carts to to take the equipment out to the to the curb, where they could go around the curb. I think we ordered one per site.
One per site, one, one, if it was one per, I'm sure it's, I have three ones. So we we had ordered four.
And do you have?
But now we have seven. So it's going to be up to the court to.
Doorbells, but two of those sides coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, this this order, and is one enough?
Yeah, it's one, one enough. Like I said, no.
Well, I was always thinking, maybe if we had two, I don't know if we have the staff to.
That's the thing.
Services. But but we do need at least seven. Or, you know what, get eight.
Okay.
We have one extra just in case.
Okay, sounds good.
And that's a great people to, they got two weeks to hold it there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got three weeks.
Three weeks.
That's three weeks, you're right.
Yeah. Okay, the motion, motion passed. We're okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me skip fourteen and go to item fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, Rose needs to to leave. And Commissioner, sign itself, pass this one to you. Because I have a counter.
Item what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. It's going to take, we will amend it to take the payment agreement between Stark Army, Solar, and N L C Rosen, that's the foundation. With the rose.
Good morning.
Good morning. Your honor, your honor, commissioners, this is actually an item that we'd already discussed. There was a change in the scope of the solar project, so we had to make a fit amendment on the agreement to reflect the size of it. And and we're asking today for a formal approval so that we can allow this project to move forward.
I'm moving to approve the payment presented.
Second, I'm.
I'll do the favor, I'll do the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I motion Perez.
Judge, you have your statement?
I'm out. I did not participate.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Let's go back to item fourteen. And this is to approve an interlocal agreement between Border Region and the Detention Center, Sheriff Fuentes, I think.
Your honor, commissioner.
Good morning.
Morning. We have an interlocal agreement. I've been on the phone with the Border Region. I've been trying to figure out, do they comply with the Texas Civil Commission standard, which is the put a deadline for September the first, to have, especially in telemedicine site, up and running before September first. It's twenty-four hours a day services for any individual who needs to speak to a doctor or a representative for M I M J M R. This this interlocal agreement includes, it's it's a link, you know, we we put the individual in front of a computer, and they're able to to talk to somebody at any time of the day. We have a good system in place right now. We call the Border Region, they come over all the time. But the legislation did rule that, I guess it's because of rural jails outside and other parts of Texas that don't have capability to M I M J M R services, they put, all jails must have telemedicine site. So this also includes that services as well.
Is there any fee for this?
Yes, there is a fee included there. It's all, it's it's part of the agreement. M I M J M R is, has a fee of psychiatric evaluation, three hundred dollars, psychiatric medication management, a hundred fifty dollars. And different, different services have different prices. The face-to-face is twenty-five dollars for thirty minutes.
Who pays that?
It'll be the.
The jail, and and what I was going to get at is normally if the inmate has Medicare or Medicaid.
Correct. Yes, and we'll hit the Medicaid, the Medicaid first.
Okay.
And if all, if all is settled, then the the bill comes to the office. So then we'll we'll have to take care of it from that, from that point.
I'm moving to approve the interlocal agreement.
Moving to second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please. I. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, your honor. Take your mission.
Thank you.
Okay.
Take your decision.
Sixty through thirty-nine are budget amendments, Mr. Perez.
Yes, all of those have been reviewed, and we recommend that if you want to.
Second, the motion.
Moving to second to approve, discussion.
Okay.
Honitor, please. I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty is a budget correction?
Yes, sir. And that too has been reviewed, recommended.
Yeah, we do.
Moving to second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please. I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And I guess it's ten forty-five, and pursuant to section five five one point oh seven four, we will not go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and to revise status for the person discussing agent broker record, of record for employee supplement insurance. Eleven o'clock, and we're back in open session. We had two items to discuss in the second session. One of them was the order of salaries.
I'm moving to approve the order of salaries.
Second.
Moving to second to approve order of salaries, discussion. Honitor, please. I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And then the other thing that we discussed was the possible action on agent of record for the supplement insurance, the the one we had selected, decline the selection. So I guess we'll discuss it again at our next Commissioners Court meeting and possibly take action as to who it would be awarded to. So I'll give no action for good deed or not. Anything else?
And vote two.
If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Hang it.
Moving to second, Honitor, please. I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.